I believe our first ordinance is item 23.
So, we just introduce item 23 and also see if the Sheriff's Department has any comments as well. We've been experiencing a lot of sideshow activity in the unincorporated area. Not an overwhelming abundance, but it's occurred in San Lorenzo, Castro Valley, other communities. And I know the public is painfully aware of the proliferation of the sideshow activity that's occurred in other neighboring jurisdictions, on freeways, on bridges, in broad daylight, at all hours of the day and night, with hundreds of cars, hundreds of participants. And at the sideshow activities, there's been public safety issues from cars burning, gunshots. The quiet enjoyment of communities, both residential and commercial, have been disrupted. First responder vehicles, whether they're ambulances, firefighters, even law enforcement, have been unable to discharge their duties. The sideshow concerns have escalated over the course of time. I, for one, have been trying to look at how we could address the sideshow since roughly 2016. And I've just seen it grow and grow and grow and become even more unorderly and a public safety threat. I do think that it's important that we balance civil liberties, the right of the First Amendment, with public safety. And from the work that county councils done on this, county councils assured me that the ordinance that we've put together is similar to other ordinances that are in other jurisdictions. And we are not doing anything that's out of the norm. And I would have county councils speak to that in a minute. So, this ordinance would apply in the unincorporated area. And I know our Sheriff's Department's been working with the CHP and with our allied agencies in San Leandro and Hayward to address the sideshow activity. So, I think this is a prudent approach at looking at trying to address the sideshow. The one thing I would do in order to, with this ordinance is, I know it calls for a misdemeanor fine of up to $1,000 for spectators and six months in jail. I would just say that we could lessen the six months to maybe three months as a deterrent. And in terms of the discretion of law enforcement, we do expect that our officers will discharge their duties constitutionally and professionally. We know at times that doesn't occur. And if that were to be a bridge, then that would be addressed. And if someone were to happen to get cited inappropriately, that can also be challenged in court and have that misdemeanor ticket dismissed. So, I do think there's enough safeguards. And when I look at balance and equities, I think there's enough balance here and safeguards that for the board to enact this ordinance would be prudent and justified. So, I just wanted to introduce this, but I want to give county council and Sheriff Sanchez an opportunity to speak to this as well. So, Sheriff Sanchez.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. As far as this ordinance, it would be helpful to have as far as a tool for our deputies to be able to contact people and disperse them. And if they fail to disperse, it would be a citation at that point unless, you know, it escalates further. But we've been hearing calls from our residents to take action. And this is going to be a necessary tool to be able to assist with people who have been suffering with sideshows in their neighborhoods, in the residential neighborhoods, and the destruction of their neighborhoods. So, that occurs when hundreds of people come into the area. So, and, you know, from what we've experienced too, there's a lot of people that come outside of our county who are not residents of our county, who are coming in because these people who are sharing through YouTube, they're calling people from all areas to come in and really destroy the neighborhood. So, you know, we have a team who's been working through this. Commander Blanchard is here, as well as Detective Cully, as far as working with our neighboring agencies to curtail and disperse sideshows and really thwart them away from our communities. So, if there's any questions as to how this would affect First Amendment rights, I mean, we do have discretion. And we know that, you know, the press is going to be interested if there is sideshow activity. And we know that we will be allowing the press in. This is not, you know, going to deter anyone from being able to report out on these incidents. This really just gives the sheriff's office a tool to be able to address it appropriately.
County Council?
So, to your earlier comments, President Miley, we are, we have put together an ordinance that is specifically preparatory of spectator participation in sideshows because that is the next wave of attempts to abate these events, to prevent them from happening. We are the latest of a number of jurisdictions in the Bay Area who have taken exactly this step, using almost identical language to what is in our ordinance. There are jurisdictions all up and down the state, but there are at least nine or 10 in the immediate Bay Area that have already done this. And we are modeling our ordinance on that. The ordinance specifically has an intent requirement for spectators. So, they have to knowingly and intentionally be present at a sideshow to be a spectator at the sideshow. That diminishes concerns about sweeping up people who are not, who are just bystanders or who happen to live in the neighborhood where this is happening from being subject to citation for being at the sideshow. It is also protective of concerns relating to journalists who are there to, you know, from bona fide news agencies who are there to report on the event. And again, as the sheriff indicated, the ordinance gives law enforcement officers the discretion to sort of make that balance and understand where, you know, somebody is an active participant and encouraging the sideshow versus somebody who is either just there by accident or who is there to perform a reporting function. You know, it's not going to be a black line, but if you have somebody who is from San Joaquin County that happens to be there and has no other reason for being in an incorporated Alameda County, it's not as difficult to make that determination.
Thank you. Supervisor Halbert?
I appreciate legal counsel and also our sheriff weighing in and explaining how they would implement this. In my mind, there are no innocent bystanders who fail to disperse. When our sheriff's team or law enforcement asks for dispersment, you don't stand around and not disperse and be innocent. And I expect and have confidence that we will implement this ordinance in a fair and just way, as is intended by us. And as President Miley mentioned, if they don't, there's a remedy for that. It's the legal system. But I'm willing to stay with the original six months that's in here. I'm willing to entertain moving to three months if that's what the pleasure of the entire board is. But I think this is well-written and highly needed and about time. Thank you.
I would just say, this ordinance came through two board committees, the Unincorporated Services Committee, as well as Translation Planning Committee. Because it's been stated, why didn't it go through the municipal advisory councils? Well, everything doesn't have to go through the municipal advisory council. I made the decision to bring it to Unincorporated Services and Translation Planning because of the urgency and the public safety necessity. Supervisor Tam?
Thank you, President Miley. And as you mentioned, this was brought before the Unincorporated Services Committee meeting, which I served with Supervisor Miley. And in my district in San Lorenzo, this became a very critical need because there's, there were sideshows that were going into residential neighborhoods, like right next to an assisted living facility where the spectators were causing destructions of neighboring properties, peeing in lawns. And so, trying to discourage the assemblage is what we're trying to accomplish with this ordinance in order to discourage sideshows because sideshows need spectators to, I guess, to make money on. But the issue that I wanted some clarification from county council is in reference to an email from the Public Defender's Office regarding vehicle code 23109, where there's existing a state law that says that if you violate this vehicle code that's tied with sideshows often, you can be penalized for 24 hours, up to 90 days in jail, and 40 hours of community service, along with having your driver's license revoked for up to six months. And so, my desire is to try to harmonize our ordinance with state law and look at the 90 days, which is the three months. So, is there any issue if we were to have differences?
So, the vehicle code provisions outlawing reckless driving and reckless, you know, drag races and reckless driving exhibitions really relate only to the people who are actually driving the cars and only to those who aid and abet in that. So, the people who promote it or who are, you know, part of organizing the event or, you know, blocking streets, that sort of thing. The vehicle code is silent as to what to do about spectators at these events. And that is a reason why there are so many jurisdictions in California that are picking up the mantle and talking about what to do to limit participation by spectators because they obviously are the fuel for a lot of these events. And so, that's why we have done it differently. In terms of the state law penalties, the state can certainly say, "We're going to take away your vehicle registration or your driving privileges" because the state is responsible for issuing those. The county can't do that independently. So, you know, and that is not something I think that we would do, even if we could, against spectators because we're really just trying to make it financially painful. In terms of the period of potential incarceration, it is written as six months. And frankly, up to $1,000 fine is written that way because it is, would be a violation of a county ordinance. And our ordinances have a provision that say violation of a county ordinance is a misdemeanor punishable by up to $1,000 in fines and up to six months in prison. That is the general, you know, statement on that. But if your board desires, they can go with a shorter period for incarceration because this is a specific, this is specific legislation. So, that would be controlling, and you have the discretion to do that if you would like to do that. But as far as the other things that the vehicle code does, I don't see an opportunity to make those kinds of changes in this ordinance.
I wasn't suggesting that we change the vehicle code, obviously. I was trying to be responsive to the Public Defender's statement that there are existing laws now and how is our local ordinance going to be different and try to harmonize some of the penalties as well.
So, as I stated, the difference is that the state law really does not address spectators at these events, just the people who actively participate in the driving.
Thank you.
Supervisor Marcus?
Thank you. I wanted to, I know that the ordinance refers to issues in the unincorporated parts of the county, but if this is adopted, will it be applied countywide or strictly the unincorporated parts?
It would apply only in the unincorporated parts, but there are communities all over the county that have adopted or are in the process of adopting very similar ordinances. So, and this would allow cross-jurisdictional work.
Okay. And then with respect to the fines and/or imprisonment, who makes that determination?
I believe that the fines would be incident to the citation by law enforcement. And so, I think they have the discretion to determine the severity of that, subject to whatever the court does with it.
Okay. And then just help me understand, like, practicality-wise, how would this be enforced? Can that be described, please?
Yes, so I can call Commander Blanchard and Detective Cully up to basically kind of share what they've already experienced already and how it would be applied. But ultimately, I mean, when we go, our very purpose in responding to sideshows is to disperse people. And this would be helpful if, for those who do not disperse, we have a mechanism to address them. Do you guys want to come up? And then just for clarity, so when we cite individuals for an ordinance, it goes to the courts and it gets, as far as the amount, that gets situated there. But we are just basically putting on the citation, the ordinance, that somebody was cited for.
Good afternoon. Second, what the sheriff says, we don't dictate the terms of the price of that finer fee. We issue the citation.
Would you want to introduce yourself, please?
I'm sorry, I'm David Blanchard, I'm a commander with our Law Enforcement Services Division. We don't dictate the terms of what happens once we write the citation. It's a promise to appear in court, not an admission of guilt. That person will have an opportunity to go through the court proceedings, just like anyone else that received a misdemeanor citation, like running a red light or any other vehicle code offense. The court system takes the citation from there and does whatever they do with it. So, that part's out of our hands. Our job is to arrive on scene and evaluate what's taking place and then making determinations based on the parts of the ordinance that allow us to identify, speak to, investigate, if you're a spectator or not, a knowing, willing spectator. If we determine that you are and we issue that citation, then that's what occurs. So, every contact that we make, there's police work that has to be done. There's investigative conversations that have to take place. Specifically for this, in an example of a very large crowd, there's going to be a lot of conversations that take place with people to help us determine whether or not they are there illegally against the ordinance and whether or not we're going to take action against them. There are lots of people that get caught up in sideshows because of the path of travel they take. Those folks are sitting in their cars, they're scared, they're waiting to move on. Or there are other people that are parked illegally, blocking intersections, blocking the roadways, living out of county, can't give us a plausible reason of why they are where they are, et cetera, et cetera. So, everything that we do during the course of all of our contacts, but specifically regarding this, is an investigative process. It's a conversation process with the people that we're talking to to help gain information so that we can make an educated decision on whether or not they are in violation. No different than any other vehicle stop or any other arrest or any other contact with the public, we have to speak with these people to determine whether or not they are in violation of a crime.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, the citation has to be given there in person? Or is there an option after the fact, reviewing footage or social media posts?
There can be.
Okay.
We, there is follow-up investigation that could take place. If there's a scenario where you have somebody that we believe is a spectator, but we're not certain, there's not reasonable suspicion and/or probable cause for us to believe that they're guilty of that crime, and we were to do follow-up investigations with body and wear camera footage or aerial footage or surveillance footage to determine, yes, they were an active spectator, then we can issue that citation at a later date. Typically, in these particular situations, when we're corralling large groups and trying to disperse the crowd, those that don't self-disperse are the ones that we're going to talk to and manage, and we'll use all of the resources and technology that's in our availability to us to make that decision.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the Sheriff's Department?
Nope, thank you.
All right. And I know we've been told that sometimes sideshows will take place right in front of law enforcement. It's just gotten people, have gotten bold and enbrazen to disregard the law and the public safety of the rest of the, you know, of the populace. The, I know there was a person from the Public Defender's Office who talked to me and others over the years who have talked to me. Because like I said, I've been working on this and been concerned about this since 2016. And I said, "Well, why don't you create locations for people to have sanctioned sideshows?" Well, first of all, there's liability coverage that's associated with that. Even if that were to happen at the Coliseum, there'd need to be liability coverage for that. And folks don't want to come into a sanctioned location. The whole intent of a sideshow is illegal behavior. So, I don't think setting up a legal location for a sideshow will really impact the proliferation of sideshow activities because it has proliferated over time throughout, not just throughout the Bay Area, it's everywhere. And so, I think we have an obligation, at least I feel, I have an obligation to preserve the public safety, and particularly since I represent the unincorporated area, which were it a city, it'd be the fourth largest city in the county, only Oakland, Fremont, and Hayward would be larger. So, I have some obligation to pass laws that I can ensure the safety of the public in the unincorporated area and do that in a manner that's reasonable. And I do believe the Sheriff's Department will discharge its duties professionally with the allied agencies that are working with us, as well as county councils, research and preparation of this ordinance to align it with the necessary protections of civil liberties. So, I think that's all I want to say about this at the moment. And Brendan Woods has his hand up, so we'll have the Public Defender speak. Once again, the issue of the sideshow, trying to address that, if there were laws in the books that would allow for law enforcement to effectively deal with the sideshow that has proliferated all over the Bay Area and in Southern California and elsewhere, I think those existing laws would have curtailed it. So, I'm going to be very interested to see what Brendan Woods, the Public Defender, has to say about this, since he has his hand up. So, let him speak, since he's a county department head and he's the Public Defender.
Good afternoon, board members. Thank you Supervisor Miley for allowing me to speak. And we did send a letter this morning over to the board. I apologize for not getting it sooner. Maybe I can turn on my camera here, too. There you go, thank you. So, as I've been listening to this hearing, there've been a few things that have concerned me, and our objection to this ordinance is how it's overbroad, where people, predominantly people of color, are going to be swept up by this law. As I was listening to county council speak, one of the phrases he used was "to encourage sideshows." That is not a necessary element to this law. You don't have to be one who is encouraging a sideshow, you can simply be present. Another aspect that was used was this failure to disperse. Again, that is not a requirement of this law. If you were ordering someone to disperse and they don't, that is a different crime. And that is not what's addressed by this law. What we have here is simply, let me pull it up, anyone who's being a spectator, and spectator is defined extremely broadly, any person who's present, viewing, observing, watching, or witnesses. That is it. So, I would be in violation of this law. It doesn't require a certain number of people to be present. So, when it comes to the constitutionality of this law, I am concerned, and I've raised those concerns in my letter. I think there are some ordinances in cities that have been passed where the constitutionality has not been challenged. I anticipate here in Alameda County, this one would be challenged, similar to the board, the letter, sorry, the order that was passed in Oakland, City of Oakland, that was challenged and found and deemed unconstitutional. A few more points I'd like to make is that I know this, and I apologize for letting it be coming late, but this appears to have been something that maybe should have gone to public protection, then it would have been on our radar and we could have addressed it then, but it did not go through that route. I've heard repeatedly how this is necessary for public safety. And then we could have had a debate about this in public safety, and I could have weighed in, and the attorney could have weighed in, and that has not been done. And when it comes to crimes that will be prosecuted, we are creating an ordinance which we have no idea if the prosecutor will actually prosecute, especially given the nature of crimes we see. Being a spectator without ill intent is not one that we'd want to prosecute. And then finally, I keep hearing a lot about judgment and how it's going to be contained with regards to the sheriff's office and people enforcing the laws. From where I sit, I cannot tell you how time and time again, I've seen a huge disproportionate amount of black and brown people get swept up simply because they are black and brown. And this ordinance has such the potential to do that. I've laid that out in my letter. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I can bring forth my law and motions people who have a better understanding of the law with regards to the objections that can be made at the next hearing if you'd like.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Woods. Does county council have any comments based on the legal opinions of our Public Defender?
Oh, no.
Okay, all right. Supervisor Halbert?
I just want to acknowledge, Mr. Woods, I did receive your letter, it was very well-written. I appreciate comments, as our President Miley often says, reasonable people can disagree. I don't disagree with everything, but I do feel that we need to take a further step. If this is found unconstitutional, then so be it, but we have to take a stand. And so, I, again, I appreciate everything you do. And I'll just end by saying, indeed, this risk of innocent people being profiled and swept up exists. It's a horrible thing that it does, but that's not what we're targeting, and I hope that sideshows stop as a result of this. Thank you again for all you do.
Yeah, and I would associate my comments with Supervisor Halbert, appreciate your weighing in. Mr. Woods, typically matters in unincorporated area, don't go to public protection. I've been on the board for 20 years or more. I don't bring items to public protection when they deal with unincorporated area. An unincorporated area, if it's a jurisdiction, a city, we typically, or municipality, we typically do it through the Unincorporated Services Committee and Transfers and Planning Committee. So, this was not anything to avoid the Public Protection Committee, but we typically don't take things through the Public Protection Committee. So, that's why this didn't go through the Public Protection Committee. And so, I appreciate you weighing in today on this matter. You and I usually agree on everything, but we don't agree on all things. And I respect you as being a strong proponent of the justice system and making sure the scales of justice are balanced. But in this case, black and brown people are out there, are not just the only ones causing problems with sideshows. I recognize that, I see that. And sideshow activity does happen in black and brown communities. And I have constituents who are black and brown who are asking for regulation of these type of illegal behaviors. So, I'm expecting law enforcement to do their jobs professionally, and we need to have more tools to ensure that they can do their jobs. But I do appreciate you weighing in. And if perchance we find this is overbroad and we have to, I mean, once again, I don't know if it's going to pass, but if we find it's overbroad and we're challenged and we have to redo it, we'll go back and do that. Or if we find out that it needs to be changed, then we'll go back and do that as well. But I think it's very appropriate to take this next step. And as I said, I don't know if there'll be five votes for this, or three votes for this, but I'm putting this forward because of what I've observed, not just recently, but historically over the course of time. Because I have, I'm not new to this. I am not new to this. I shared the Public Safety Committee when I was on the Oakland City Council. I've lived in the City of Oakland for 40 years. I've been in the community, I've seen problems and issues. And I think we need to be taking steps to address the lawless inaccountability that's occurring in our communities. And this is just another example of that. But I do expect that you'll do your job to- But I do expect that you'll do your job to defend people as appropriate. And you do a good job of it, you and all your people. Other, any other board members with comments or questions? We had public comments on this matter already. Wright County Council?
This is not a set matter. It is on the regular calendar, but we did take public comment on all items other than.
Yeah, we've already taken public comment on that. So the, because I do speak, see that there are hands raised on this, but, and I'm not trying to curtail public comment, but public comment was given on this item earlier in the board meeting. I allowed Mr. Woods to speak because Brendan is one of our county department heads and he is the public defender. And I wanted to make sure he had voice to this. But I'm not going to open it up for other speakers. All right. Any other comments from board members? Okay. And what I, I think what I'd like to do is I'd like to modify the ordinance when it comes to section 10.40.050. And instead of it being punishable for imprisonment not to exceed six months, I'd like to modify that imprisonment not to exceed three months. So if the, when the clerk reads the ordinance, that's the one modification I'm making.
Supervisor, you'll need a motion to make that amendment and a successful vote to make the change.
So what should I do first?
If you intend to make amendments before first reading, now would be the time.
Okay, so I'd make a, I'd like to make a motion that section 10.40.050 be amended so that instead of we allow for imprisonment not to exceed six months, it's amended to imprisonment not to exceed three months. And the reason I'm suggesting that is because I do think three months is enough of a deterrent. Because that's what we're looking for, deterrence. We're not looking to punish people. We're looking to deter people from being spectators. So it'd be a $1,000 fine or the possibility of three months in prison.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any, any questions or discussion on the amendment? Do we need to read the motion into the record?
Yeah, I think your motion was clear. It was a motion to amend section 10.40.50 to provide that the ordinance, a person who violates this ordinance shall be guilty of a misdemeanor punishable by imprisonment not exceeding three months or by fine not exceeding $1,000 or by both.
And so we, so we can take up the motion now, right?
You may, yes.
All right. So if the clerk could call the roll?
Supervisor Halbert?
Aye.
Supervisor Marquez?
No.
Supervisor Tam?
Aye.
Supervisor Carson?
Yes.
President Miley?
Yes. Now if the clerk could read the motion, I mean, read the ordinance?
The title is "An Ordinance Adding Chapter 10.40 to Title 10 of the Alameda County Ordinance Code Prohibiting Spectators at Sideshows, Street Races, and Reckless Driving Exhibitions."
And that is as amended, just for purposes of the record?
As amended.
As amended.
Thank you. Okay, move away the bounds of the full first reading of this ordinance. Move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Moved by Miley, second by Halbert. The clerk called the roll.
Supervisor Halbert?
Aye.
Supervisor Marquez?
No.
Supervisor Tam?
Aye.
Supervisor Carson?
Yes.
President Miley?
Yes. So the motion carries, it will have a second reading. The second reading will be, will it be?
On your next regular agenda, which is July 11th.
July 11th. The second reading will be July 11th. And then after July 11th, if the second reading is successful, the ordinance will become effective in 30 days from July 11th. All right. Okay. So that covers that item.